Board meeting of Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 to order. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Alderman King. Alderman Stowe. Alderman.
Here.
Alderman Raslin. Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Genetti.
Here.
Alderman Spigaro.
Here.
Alderman Strowman.
Here.
Alderman Yowman. Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon.
Present.
Alderman Short.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Alderman De Libro.
Did you get Phipps?
You didn't get Phipps.
I said Phipps.
No, you didn't.
No.
No.
Alderman Fit.
He's here, though.
I know he's here. That's why, because I know I said his name. So 10 present.
John, can you rewind this and we can prove her wrong?
Don't worry about it.
10.
No worries.
10 present.
I'd like to, before we start, make a motion to add late communication number one to the motion by Cassetti.
Second.
Second by Spigaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Motion passes. We have one set of minutes, the minutes from the special meeting on August 25th.
I make a note at the minute to be accepted with approvals necessary.
Motion by Alderman Strowman, second by Alderman Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, thank you. Those pass. Public session. Anyone from the public tonight wish to speak? We'll start by, if you're on Zoom, raising your digital hand, and otherwise, we'll try to figure it out, but I'll start with that. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight?
I do.
Who's that?
My Rivers.
Oh, you're raising your analog hand. Okay.
Oh, how do I raise my digital hand?
Name an address for the public record, please.
Full name is Shemaya Rivers. Address is 19 Tomlinson Street in Sonia, Connecticut.
Okay, go ahead.
So, good evening, President Schur and all of the members of the board. As you all may know, my name is Myra Rivers, and I'm the current candidate for state representative. And of course, you know my father, Alderman Rivers. So I'm here tonight because I'd like to express my concern about the new police accountability bill passed by the Connecticut legislator and supported by our state representative, Carol Rochelle, who was elected to represent the residents of Ansonia and Derby. So this is a law that makes it easier to file frivolous lawsuits against officers, departments, and cities. This is also a law that limits the ability of police officers to defend themselves, and it makes it more difficult and costly for departments to obtain protective equipment. And this law also prevents an officer from conducting even the most basic searches for illegal weapons or drugs or in traffic stops without signed permission from the vehicle's owner. So in summary, this law is pretty negative on our police force, and as much as I can say so, our police officials and officers still look best. So Chief Cota, in his letter to this board, outlined the cost impact that this bill will have on Ansonia alone by creating new unfunded mandates. So there is a significant cost to this law that will be passed on to our communities if we are to sustain our force. And so, you know, was this really considered by our state representative? Were we really even consulted as a public? And any officers are making it very clear that they are scared, like what the law will do to them. For example, Blue Involved Police Officer Steve Grabowski, president of the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 36, was recently quoted in the Harvard Current. He said, "I'm not willing to put my family in jeopardy. I love my job, but I can't risk doing my job and getting sued." So the Valley has always supported our police officers and law enforcement community. I really feel like it's one of our priorities. So it's really unthinkable that a vote for this negative law was made on our behalf and really without our consent. So I'm asking the board, the Board of Aldermen, to really join me in asking the state legislator for a repeal of this bill. Further accountability and transparency in policing should be welcome, but this law does nothing but endanger our police officers and those who they protect, and that is us. So I'd like to request the opportunity to publicly ask our state representative why she approve this bill without constituents' consent or consideration. And my campaign will be formally submitting a request for a debate to Representative Rochelle, and I hope that she accepts. So thank you so much for listening to me, and I hope you all have a wonderful night. And I'm going to step out of the meeting. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight?
Yeah, I would.
Uh, Matt, is that you?
Yep.
Name an address for the public record, please.
Matthew McGowan at 40 Winter Street in Sonia.
Go ahead.
Ah, well, I had one thing, like a couple things. Well, I'm gonna keep this main original thing I want to say. I was just hoping that if someone out there can explain why the city hadn't, hasn't completed the site plan yet for Ansonia Copper and Brass despite ample funds from the state and years of time to do so. That's my one and only question for today.
Even... Don't even know what that means. Okay.
The city staff to address that?
I mean, I could say, Mr. President, if we're talking about the demolition of copper and brass, the city doesn't have nearly the resources to demolish even a small portion of that site. The bill is millions and millions and millions of dollars, eight million probably just to bring the buildings to the ground, never mind the remediation. And this has been a constant, constant point that the mayor has brought up for the last eight years, is that we need further help to be able to make progress on that site. I think we've been very resourceful at actually achieving demolition by working with the property owner, by getting other development funds for assessment. In order to tackle that site, the city needs help. The city needs support.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Please raise your digital hand or your regular hand. I'll look around here.
I'm... My video, no, my video, my audio kicked out, so I'm sorry. I didn't hear the last part of what John Marini said, but I don't really even understand the question beyond the fact that we shouldn't be going into a back and forth in public session. But I'm really not clear what that question was even asking. A site plan for what? A site plan is submitted when there is a development planned. So I don't know what that means. We've gotten probably about $3 million in assessment money right now for the site, and then additional approximately half a million dollars to do a, to do a area-wide assessment of Ansonia Copper and Brass. But I don't know what a site, what site plan for. That's not, maybe not the term you wanted to use.
Okay. Anyone else in the public wants to speak tonight? Second call. Anyone in the public that wishes to speak? Scrolling around. John, do you see anyone? I don't see any digital hands, and I don't see anybody. Last call for public session. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? All right, public session is closed. Public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Schur, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. Today, we welcome Congresswoman Delora and representatives from our state delegation and representatives from the U.S. Census Bureau to talk about the importance of Ansonia's response to the census and to share our stats. I am proud to say that we are near the state average in response from our residents, and that is a good thing. The greater our response, the greater the resources. So I want to remind all of you to complete the federal census you receive in the mail if you haven't already done so. I was also able to tour Ansonia Copper and Brass this morning with Congresswoman Delora, our delegation and members of this board. Thank you to President Schur, Alderman Cassetti, and Alderman Strowman for stopping by. It is always a good thing when the U.S. Congressman comes to visit. It is important to keep this site fresh in their minds and to make the case for the federal dollars that are needed to clean up this future economic generator for Ansonia and the entire valley. We will keep pressing for federal and state dollars until we have cleaned and demolished the entire site. I intend to witness the cleanup and demolition of Ansonia Copper and Brass, and I hope the contractor, whoever it may be, will allow me to operate the boom for a few minutes. I am going to take great pleasure in getting the first swing at these eyesores. You will hear from finance and our grants administrator about the FEMA reimbursements we received. That funding will go towards the purchase of PPE and other changes we have made to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents and staff. We did receive over $60,000 this week in FEMA funds so far. Fingers crossed, there will be more to come. Our drive-in movie nights have been a great success with more to come. I want to thank Cultural Commission, Public Works, Incorporated Council, John Marini, Dave Connolly, and others who have helped out with these great events as our residents deserve events during this time in a safe environment. I hear they are sold out, but maybe something new is in store. Please stay safe and healthy. God bless you all, and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Corporation Counsel, John Marini.
Thanks, Mr. President. As the mayor spoke about a development in Ansonia is moving forward, and the city deserves every advantage possible in order to redevelop and revitalize our city. To that end, we are looking at the legal framework for a redevelopment corporation to allow the city to tackle projects far larger in scope than attempted in the past. Copper and Brass just came up, and that's a great example of a project that has not just a citywide impact, but a regional impact. A huge opportunity, but one that's going to take far more resources than the city has on hand, or that any city our size would have on hand. It's going to take tackling these problems in a new way, and a municipal corporation has the ability to take money, borrow money, be able to leverage abilities that a city doesn't have all on its own. Very similar to the Shelton Development Corporation, to the Handen Development Corporation, or the Waterbury Development Corporation. They're also stuck dealing with difficult contaminated properties. And we will update you more as we go along with progress on that project. In addition, we're tackling several significant labor projects into the next two months. We have three contracts, as I've outlined before, Public Works, our city clerical unit, and our clerical supervisors. And I will keep you informed as we go along with those negotiations. And as the mayor pointed out, also, drive-in movies have been going on very successfully at Warsaw Park. We'd like to thank Warsaw for making that location available, and we're going to have an announcement later this week on a movie night closer to Halloween.
Thank you. Any questions for Corporation Counsel tonight? From the Aldermen or anyone? No? Okay. Who's next? Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, President Schur, members of the Board of Aldermen. Just a couple of quick items for you. We, I chair an organization called the Noghtuck Valley Corridor Economic Development District, which is a mouthful, but it is a 20-town region from Thomaston to Shelton, all up and down the Route 8 corridor, as well as Bristol, Terryville, and Newtown. And last week, we received notification that the district was, was a recipient of a $400,000 grant that Shelton Economic Development Corporation, Waterbury Development Corporation, our two chambers, Valley Cog, Rick Dunn, Valley Cog. This was an effort to apply to the United States Economic Development Administration for recovery and resilience planning and support for our community, our member communities. Of course, Ansonia is one of them. And so this money, although it's, it's only 400,000, but it will help our economic development efforts in each of the communities that, that the district, that comprise the district. It'll give, it'll supply some workforce development support. It'll address the retention of businesses during this difficult time for them. And it'll also help us develop an economic recovery and resilience plan. So it's good news from United States Economic Development Administration, and it's good news for the district and our region. So just wanted to mention that. Also want to mention that we are looking into a tax incremental financing, or a TIF, for our downtown district, and that's a financing tool used, used to catalyze, catalyze economic development efforts. And it's just another tool that we could use to support our business community. So we'll be, I'll be talking more about that, along with working with the Connecticut Main Street Center to bring a TIF into the downtown area, just another way to, to create some, or generate some tax revenue for economic development efforts, which I will share with you in future meetings, our progress in that regard. Have, I believe that's it. You have a resolution on your agenda for, which is just simply a resolution to allow the mayor to enter into an agreement with Department of Economic and Community Development to accept the Urban Act funding that we recently received.
We never got that.
Don't have the resolution?
No.
That's fine. It can wait till next month, then. Now you, now you already heard the speech, so I won't have to make it next, next month. All right, thanks, everyone.
Excuse me, was that the $500,000, $1,000 grant?
Yeah, that's the resolution we spoke about, Beth.
Yeah, we already did that at the meeting two weeks ago.
Yeah, we did that.
Wow, fantastic.
There's no resolutions on for tonight.
No, we didn't have anything for tonight.
Nothing else from, from the state of Connecticut?
There was two from the August 25th meeting. I don't remember.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All set. Thanks. You're on it. Thank you.
Any questions regarding our economic development from the Aldermen? All right, thank you. Next, Assistant Finance Director Kim DiStefano.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Kim.
Hi. Over the last two weeks, finance has been busy, keeping busy. As usual, just trying to prioritize as best we can, keeping up with the payroll, the accounts payable, banking, all those types of things, the highest priority, as well as just getting ready for the audit, which is upcoming. So we have a lot of work that needs to be done before we can have the auditors start coming in. It's been working out well with the four departments that we trained on the new software. Each week, it seems like there's less and less questions, and I think everyone is getting more comfortable with that. So that's a great thing. And we've been working with Sheila and her team, just trying to get this reimbursement paperwork filed and in place so that we can get the reimbursement funds back. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Kim tonight from the Aldermen? All right, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Next up, Police Chief Cota. I see him here.
I'm here. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief tonight. As you're all aware, last week, we had the unfortunate incident on Colane that we had to work on the case around the clock to investigate a homicide that occurred on Sunday evening at about 4:30 PM. We've been able to secure, secure an arrest warrant and made an arrest on that. Our detectives and department continue to work on that case to put the rest of the information together and provide it to court. So that's been ongoing since, since last week. It's kept us quite busy. We're also preparing for our fall training. We have a few training classes that we do this time of year, shotgun, taser, bloodborne pathogens, some other classes that we need to get done before the end of the year. So we are preparing for that to get those completed, to be in compliance, to get our officers recertified and such. So those are the two, the two main things that have been going on. Again, like I said, the, the homicide investigation has taken up most of our time over the past week and a couple days, and we'll continue to work on that and any other cases that come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions tonight from the Aldermen for Chief Cota?
Yes.
Alderman Rivers?
Yes. I just wanted to say, I want to thank ADP for doing such a good job and getting these, these cases closed really quickly. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Mr. President, yeah, I have something for the chief.
Yep. Alderman Spigaro, go ahead.
Chief, I've had a couple calls over the last week of a lot of disturbances in and around the, the Hill Health Center there over on Weekly Ave. I don't know if you've had any updates on that or aware of anything?
I have, I have not seen anything. We had a couple minor calls over there, but I will, I'll do a little bit of research to check on it. We've not had anything major that's occurred over there, but we will pay attention to it. Do you have daytime, evening time? Do you have any specifics or information?
I'll get you some, I'll get, I'll get your email. I'll get you some information from the people that contacted me. The majority of it seems to be more nuisance that the people have directly cited that came from that facility, arguing, vagrancy, kind of hanging around, stuff like that, on and off their properties nearby. So I'll get you in touch with the people that have contacted me.
Okay, absolutely. And we'll, we'll speak to them and see what we can do for them.
Thank you, Chief.
You got it.
Thanks. Any other questions from the Aldermen for the chief? Diane? Oh, you're muted. You just push it once, like you're turning it on and off, maybe. Diane, try, try touching it once and just leaving it and, and wait in a second. There you go.
It was a message. I'm sorry. I didn't see the message.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And I bypassed it. So I was trying to find it. This, this is for the finance. Can we go back to that for a second? Too late.
Can we finish with the chief, and then we can go back to Kim?
Yes, okay.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, Josh, it's Tony. I have a question. Hey, Chief, quick question. There was a memo circulated last meeting regarding some of the additional costs regarding the new bill. Has there been any further advancements on that? Any, any other updates than what was provided?
There has not at this point. Again, we're, we're waiting. Some, some things are changing. Some things we're waiting for Post Counsel to give us some, some guidance on so we can figure out better, I guess, finances, pricing, moving forward. We are waiting for some stuff from our Body Cam company. They've had some questions for us. We've answered those. So I don't have anything specific. Right now, we're dealing most specifically with the items that are going to be coming up on October 1st that our officers are going to have to be dealing with. But I've got nothing firm. As I get more, I'll be able to provide it to you. Again, the estimates that I gave you are simply that at this moment. We've been not able to get anything more significant yet.
Hey, Chief, another concern. I've heard officers, or at least the city, may have to start picking up potentially some additional insurance on the officers, some additional insurance policies. Is there any estimates that you could embed or at least calculate or put on that so that we have a, a complete estimate, if you will?
I don't have that at this point. So there's some discussion. That's a, I believe it falls under feasibility study that the, there's a task force that's actually working on that on the state level to determine if that is something that would be, be required or feasible. So at this point, as far as I understand the bill, there's nothing that requires this at that point, but we do have KIRMA and some other legal minds that are working on that to try to help us ascertain exactly what those figures would be and how it would affect and/or interact with, with the insurance that the city carries at this moment. So again, that's still in the, in the early stages, and they've not really provided us any in, on-hand costs at this point, but it's definitely something that our insurance carriers are looking into to try to help us figure out. But there is a task force that's working on that on the state level also.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Chief, can I follow up on that a little bit? So it seemed in your, in your letter to us that you, you know, you're obviously concerned about the hit that this is going to put on us as a municipality and how we might be able to manage that. So are these talks ongoing, you know, in the state, or, you know, how can we sort of navigate this?
So, so that's the, that's the issue. They are ongoing because some things are phased in. We're trying to address those. The, the state has given the Police Officer Standard Training Council some things to work on to, to report back. Other departments, our own insurance companies are working on these. So yeah, much, much of this is, is phased in, but there's, there's not a lot of clarity yet. So the, the hope is that when, when legislature goes back into session, we can get some more refinement and clarity on exactly what is going to be required of us so we can ask the, the appropriate questions to start to nail down some of these costs or expenditures that we could expect to see. So I've been speaking with other chiefs in, around the Valley and other places and having state meetings, and it's the same thing. We're, we're trying to get there, but there's nothing solid that we have that we can present our cities immediately. This was more of a, let you know that this may be coming down the road so we can begin to prepare for it, but there's simply no firm numbers at this moment.
I mean, it's, it seemed like it was made totally randomly, and you were going to have to back into how much money we need. And there's no, there's, there has been no indication as to, you know, whether any of this is going to be funded, with, you know, whether the state's going to help with funding to, you know, comply with these mandates. But right now, it just looks like it's just going to cost us a lot of money.
We're trying to work through that to determine exactly what it, what it's going to cost us. Again, it's, it's a work in progress because everybody's in the same boat. It's not just Ansonia. It's every town, and we're trying to do some things as a region to, to get answers to these. It's easier to talk to a group as opposed to just a single, a single police department. So we are, we are working from a multitude of angles, and as I get something that's a little more concrete, I will provide it to you.
Thank you, Chief.
Sheila, there was, there was a mention within the chief's memo that there was a reimbursement. There was a fixed amount from the state. It didn't look like it was going to cover a whole lot. It was towards the bottom of the second page, but the, the expenses that were there, even at a high level, were, were somewhere in that, you know, I believe it was close to like 180, 250 range. If you looked at annualized everything and where it was going to be, that didn't include any of the ongoing maintenance or hit that we would end up taking or rising costs year over year. It looked at just a fixed one-time cost as it was going to go at an annual rate.
Right. Not to mention tying our officers' hands, so.
Yeah, that's, that's hard to put a value on, Sheila.
Chief, we've heard some concern from some of the members of the commission. How is, how is the morale of the force in the wake of this?
We are working through it. That's the best answer. We're trying to determine exactly, you know, how it affects the officers. It's, everybody's unsure. The officers are still trying to sort through this. We're still trying to sort through it to provide our officers with the best guidance on, on how to, how to comply with the current rules or upcoming laws and current laws. So it's, it's a, it's a time of nervousness, and officers are trying to sort out exactly where, where we fit in in this, in this whole program. Again, as I said in the last meeting, if, if there's laws that are, that are approved, we will, we will comply with those. We will do what we have to do. But it's, it's quite a strange place to be right now, but it's not unique to just Ansonia. So we're going to continue to sort through this and do the best we can.
I have one more question, Chief, on the public safety aspect. So you see a lot of officers taking early retirement. I believe there were quite a few in the Rochester area that just took early retirement as well. What's our contingent plan? quite a few in the Rochester area that just took early retirement as well. What's our contingent plan? You know, if we do have, you know, an excess amount of early retirements to ensure that, you know, public safety goes, you know, to the top notch that we're used to.
Well, the, the issue there is going to be, you, you don't know if somebody's going to retire until they put in their papers. We are, we have a running list. We continue to work on that. We plan for, you know, any eventualities as we move forward. The, the key here in the end is going to be being able to bring in new officers and get academy classes and, and all those things. So those, those are long range issues that every department, including Ansonia, has to think about to be prepared. But again, in order to kind of be ahead of the curve, you'd have to start funding extra officers now to backfill potential spots. So it's, it's expensive to do that. So we're going to continue to monitor that. We're doing the best we can. Hopefully our officers will continue to give us the, you know, a heads up if they decide that they are going to do that. We have a mix in the department. We have quite a wide variety of people that are, could be eligible to retire. Some have 15 years on, some have 10, and we've hired new ones, new officers over the past few years. So we're, we're kind of spread out there. But this, this accountability law and officers' decisions on, on how some of these things play out in the long run will ultimately, we'll have to wait and see how this pans out for us.
Okay. And then one last request, maybe joint for you and for Kim. Sorry for so many questions, but can we potentially put, you know, either, you know, what does that look like? Two, three, four officers? If something like that were to happen and we had to add that into a forecast, where does that fall, Chief? If we could just work up some of those numbers, just get them back so that we can, as we move into an earlier budget cycle, we can kind of start to look at what that technically looks at from a financial aspect if we decide to go with that model.
I can, I can work on that, begin getting that to, to Kim to review, or we can put those numbers together and start to have some, some sort of a plan. Yes.
Thanks, Chief.
Anyone else want to skewer the Chief while he's here on the Barbie? No? Thank you, Chief. Stay safe. Next up, Mike D'Alessio, is he here?
He is. I'm sorry, he had a conflict. He has another meeting.
All right. So I believe that, that closes out public official session.
I had a question, remember?
Oh, yeah. Let's go back. So Kim is still here. And then your question was finance related, correct?
Right. And it had to do with the, the tax report. And I know you, you had a little comment that talked about the people who were delinquent. And you, you, you put all the categories together. Is it possible for us to be able to get the list and show exactly the status of those individual accounts and what's happening? You know, is it bankruptcy? Is it an auction? There's a lot of folks on there and that's a lot of money that's out there.
Okay, yes, that sounds like a good question. We can ask our tax collector if that can be designated out and into the different categories that you're talking about. So I'll speak with Johanna tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So let's move on. We got committee reports. Finance Committee. Charlie, where are you? We need you.
Motion to pay all bills.
There you go. Motion by Alderman Mamone, second by Alderman Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Are there any other committee reports or subcommittee reports anyone wants to give this month? We have the Fire Marshal's report this month faithfully every month. A few other reports are in there, but is, do any of the Aldermen have any updates? Perfect. Moving on, municipal reports. Boat met immediately prior to this meeting at six, so there's no report ready to approve for this month, but we'll have that at our next, our next month's meeting. Let's see. Land use. We, we got two reports, one for July and one for August. So I'm looking for a motion for the July report. Land use report, approve that?
You got a motion here.
Motion from Alderman Rivers. Second by Alderman Spigaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Perfect. And we have the activity report for August 2020. Land use report. Alderman Cassetti, motion, and second by Alderman Spigaro. Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Abstentions. Perfect. Now just note that the revenue for July was $27,476.66 and in August was $26,249.10. So good job there. Let's see. Next up, we have the tax collector's report. And as Kim pointed out, we will, we will get that question. Diane, your question to the tax collector. I did have a conversation with her today. She, regarding that, and I think she'd be willing to give us anything, anything you want. She said if there's any specific properties or additional detail on any of that, that she's willing to provide that to us. So, great question.
Diane, I do agree with you, Diane. I think it does need a column here, maybe that just gives us, you know, even if it's just five different categories of, you know, again, bankruptcy, lean, auction, whatever. I think that's helpful and that will eliminate a lot of the questions we may have.
Exactly. Thank you.
And as she explained to me, the, those items that were all included in last month's report, some of those were old as well. All fit under the problem account category for whatever reason, whether it's a, you know, a tough parcel, nobody wants to buy it. The person's deceased, whatever it may be. There's, there's, and I think having that detail would be great, you know, to be able to, to sort of dig down on that. But she told me that she supplied that to give a little bit of insight as to why that collection is, is low because you're stuck with, with those. You can't just delete them out. And you kind of have to manage them. So I'll ask her for more information as well. So that was a great question. Thank you. Do we have a motion to, to accept this month's tax collector report?
I make a motion.
Make that motion.
Motion by Alderman, and then the second by Alderman Mamone. All in favor? Oppose. Stained. Perfect. Motion passes unanimously. Let's see, what else we got here? We have nothing under accidents and claims. So next up, we have communication. We have late communication number one, which was added to, added to the agenda. Let me pull that up. Actually, I skipped one thing. I have the request for refunds. Refunds in the amount of 504556.
Motion to accept the refund report of $5,045.56.
Motion by Alderman, second, Alderman Mamone, second by
Second, Rivers.
Alderman Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Nobody. Perfect. Thank you. So late communication number one. That's some small print. At least I printed it small. This is September 4th. This is a letter to me and to the Alderman. RE transfers. Dear President Schurt, please find the attached transfers for the 2015 and 2017 referendum projects for your consideration. We're closing out all of the unused funds and consolidating them into other line items. We have run short, so the projects can be completed. And this is from Sheila O'Malley, and she says she and Rich Bishar are both here to answer any questions as they pertain. Thank you in advance for your support and time on this request. So this is late communication number one. Motion to accept this. Alderman Cassetti. Second by anyone?
Second.
Who's that? Joe Giannetti.
I have questions with the Minister President.
Yes. Alderman Phipps. Go ahead.
On the report, I, I take note of 2015 expense. It says armory roof. And it, it shows $1,096. I don't quite understand the flow of that. But my question, just in general terms, is the armory roof was never finished. And I was wondering, with all of this money that we're moving around, can we find him some to finish the job?
Believe that. Rich and, Rich, you're muted, but Sheila, you both are here.
Yep. Alderman Phipps, we, we did complete the armory roof. Are you talking about additional? I'm not, I'm not sure, you know.
That included all of the taking of the brick down. That was a large project.
All the repointing.
And it was roof work, I think. One of the local vendors did a lot of the work and then there were cutbacks on it. I know the city did a bunch of stuff, but that was a very large project. As far as I know, we haven't put any money into it. There's nothing remaining out there on this.
But that roof project was completed. I don't know, you, you, are you talking about the exterior facade, Mr. Phipps?
Well, it was a, it's probably not that armory roof. That roof probably is the roof. Way. I guess I'm referring to the other part. The very large masonry project we had.
Yep.
That completed the east parapet was never capped. That's when they pulled out. I don't know, can't remember what the.
And it was, yeah, it was rotted underneath what, what they had pulled out and removed. I wish Mike D'Alessio were on the call because he can speak to this better than I can. But you're right, there's more work to be done on the, on the armory. Absolutely.
I go walk around all the time and that east parapet isn't finished and the finished granite caps or whatever you would call them are sitting behind the storage container in the corner of the armor. And it's just confused that they haven't seen. It gives the appearance that it was a walk away and.
Yeah, no, the roof, the roof, the roof was completed and the contractor had completed what he was, had outlined to do. However, you're right, there's additional work to be done. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. I hope it doesn't fall between the chairs.
Well, I just want to tell. Yeah, I want to tell you that the, the building is sealed up, right? It's, it's, has been shored up, at least from the roof and the windows and the exterior. But could use some more work. Absolutely.
No, I, I appreciate it. What they did looks good. It's just that one little, one little end of the roof, the, the parapet.
You'd have somebody checking out. Okay.
And then there's other dimensions to the progress, but that's future bonding. But anyway, that's my comment with the roof. The thousand dollars, whatever it did.
Okay.
Rich, do you have a comment on this?
Well, basically, these referendum items that we had detailed out here, in essence, most of these projects are complete as far as we're concerned. There were some residual values that sat there and we'd like to close out the individual projects so that we can take them off of the ledger. And so one of the thoughts we had was to put them into a couple of projects that still remain open. One of them is the Nolan Field Improvements. And the other item that was still viable was the Nature Center Pond dredging. But that was like $300,000 to $400,000. And we didn't have that much and we used some of that money because the parking lot up there went way over budget and they want, they deemed that as more appropriate at the time that they wanted that parking lot. I think that went over by 150 or 200,000 or whatever. So my recommendation, if you so choose, or you can do it another way, spread it out, whatever you want. But what I'm trying to do in essence is to get the balance after transfers to be zero for those projects that we're not going to really, we're, we're final with and we're not going to really spend that additional money. And then put that money into a project that we might be able to utilize and finish off the project that we didn't have as much money for. And I know Nolan Fieldhouse has been one of them. So I was recommending we put it into Nolan Fieldhouse. Leave that project open. There's, I believe, eighty, that would put eighty some odd thousand on the fifteens and another 15,000, I believe, from the seventeen projects so that we could go in and finish the Nolan Field complex. And we're still waiting on the Riverwalk for final closure from the state DOT. But once that comes through and we're sure that there are no outstanding bills or money to come back in on those, we can use that money to transfer down and utilize in the seventeen Riverwalk account so that we can use that for new segment three and four. But I can't let that go until we know what the closure is on segment seven and eight. So it's just a, a lot of this is for cleanup so that we can get a lot of the projects that we deem as being final to be closed out and/or if there's, like in, on the seventeens, I've moved all the debt admin into one account so that we don't have multiples out there for the different projects. We only have one more debt service to probably do on that and that'll be done. So that money's all in one spot. But a number of small ones that were done, those projects are, not that they couldn't spend money on them, but basically the, the prime project is done. We'd like to close those out so that we don't have to keep carrying them across. And that way we can then use that money. The area where we had the most problem in the seventeens was with the miscellaneous city projects. There were a number of projects in that and some of them went over and we need to replenish that if we could there. So I was looking at on the seventeens, putting the extra money towards that. We still have with that probably a dozen or so projects on the seventeen that we're going to try and have some people start looking at on the, the pump stations or the, the flood dike pump stations. Has a few things and there's a couple that we might be able to get working on now, but the primary focus on this was to close some of the one projects that we deem as complete so that it makes it easier when we're trying to analyze the, the data and utilize the money without letting it sit there for long periods of time.
All right. Any, any other questions on, on specifics here of the?
The request, basically from the finance side is to approve that retrans, or transfer request column of pluses or minus by project number. And they net to zero when they're all done, but that's what we're looking to have approved is the transfer request column.
Okay, so motion, and we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions on this? All right. So let's vote. All in favor? Oppose? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you guys for your work on that.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. What we got next? We have no resignations this month. Thank God. We have no resolutions. So next up, we have appointments. Mayor's letter, September 2nd, 2020. So we have nine total appointments proposed by the mayor. The new Ansonia Parks and Rec Board, there's seven appointments, and then there is one cultural commission and one Board of Assessment Appeals. So we'll start with the first one. The, the Parks and Rec, these are all five-year terms, all starting nine, one, or all starting and, and term expiring nine, one, 25. And they're all new appointments. Do you guys want to do them as one block or since they're all, all the same? I'll read them regardless. Anyone have an objection to doing them all at once?
No objection.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'll read the, for Tricia's benefit. I'm going to read the, the name and the address. All the terms end nine, one, 25, and they're all new appointments. So first nominee, Tracy DeLibro, Republican, Three Martin Terrace, Ansonia, Connecticut, 06401 for a five-year term. Dan King, Republican, 70 Woodland Ave, apartment 16 of Ansonia. Jeff Coppola, Democrat, 43 Glenn Drive, Apartment B of Ansonia. Tim Holman, Republican of 15 Fourth Street, Unit 2 in Ansonia. Robert Jones, Unaffiliated, 29 Hoinskey Way, Ansonia, Connecticut. Kevin Rowley, Democrat, 62 Webb Terrace of Ansonia. And Mike, Michael D. D'Alessio, Michael D'Alessio, Democrat, 168 Prospect Street. And, uh, Mike, uh, Michael D. DeLassio, Michael DeLassio, Democrat, 168 Prospect Street, uh, Ansonia, Connecticut. Those are the seven nominees.
I make a motion?
Motion to approve by Alderman Rivers, second by anyone. Alderman Cassetti, all in favor?
Question?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Febbs, hair brum.
Yep.
I think out of the names you read off, five of them have to be there because they are representing different areas of the, um, of the constituency that was established with the, uh, new committee. You know, Mickey and, uh, Jeff and, uh, those people, Timmy Holman, I believe is wetless, uh, Dan Rivers is, uh, um.
Dan King.
Dan King, he's representing another, uh, subcommittee. So there's only three people technically that we're voting on. And that would be Tracy and Bobby Jones and Kevin Rowley. Is that my understanding?
Well, we have to vote on all of them, but yeah, by, by the structure of that committee, a lot of these people are pegged in there and there was, I think, two or three public spots.
Yeah. So yeah. I was wondering with Tracy DeLibro, you know, she's already been, she's already had a couple of committees. And, uh, is the mayor, uh, open to finding someone else? Sort of spread the wealth out a little bit. You know, it seems like the same people are coming up for different appointments and, um, I would hope that there was somebody else out there maybe, you know, because Tracy is busy, um, with the Board of Education. And it's just my own, you know, my own response, but Bobby Jones, I know is a good guy and so is Kevin Rowley. And, um, but, uh, that's, uh, that's my observation, uh, food for thought.
Okay, I don't, is the mayor here? I'll pass that on to, to the mayor. Um, but we do have a motion and a second, so, um, we should vote. Uh, all in favor? Any opposition? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, one abstention, Phipps. Thank you. Yes. Oh, two, uh, and, um, Alderman, you, you are abstaining?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next, um, is cultural commission. This is a three-year term. Need my glasses again. Renee Simpson, Unaffiliated, 180 Westfield Ave, and that's a term expiring nine, one, 25.
Make the motion, we accept.
Motion by Strowman, second by Cassetti, all in favor? Oppose? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Uh, and the last one is, uh, Board of Assessment Appeals, five-year term. John Maloney, Republican, PO Box 69, Ansonia, Connecticut, uh, term expiring 12, 31, 20.
We have to have an address, not a PO box.
Uh, we, we discussed this, um, couple, couple months, last month or?
Yeah.
Um, there was a reason why he didn't, where he gave the, he did give us his home address, but he didn't want it listed in here. We verified that he lives in the city, has an address.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, yeah, I remember now.
I believe somewhere near where, um, Bill wants us to finish that job, if I recall correctly.
I remember now.
Okay, so that was the, yeah, so that's why that's listed as that. Um, and I think it was listed the other way, but we asked him, he, he came to the meeting and he also gave, um, his, in the public session. So all in favor? Oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention, Phipps, thank you. Uh, all right, so that's the appointments. Let's see. We have nothing under ordinance this month. Uh, under new business, we have, uh, facade application for, uh, Relish Wine Bar and Grill. I'm assuming Sheila, are you going to handle this or John?
I can take that.
Okay.
Um, although I, I think John would probably wants to review and, uh, make sure they're, they, they have everything filled out properly or I don't, not sure if he's already done so, uh, but they're looking for a small facade loan to do some exterior work to their building. And I think, do you, do you, uh, have a copy of the application in your packets?
No, we did not receive that.
Okay, maybe, um, John?
So I think we want to get the application to the Alderman, although it's really your pleasure as a board how we would like to move forward with approving an application of this nature. Um, I think Sheila, if I'm not wrong, sometimes the board has approved it. Other times we've had a committee, EDC approve it. So I think at this point in time, it would be helpful for the board to determine what the process should be. Um, I've taken a look at this one and it does meet the procedural requirements. This is not like that deviation, you know, the request that deviates from the program last time. But in terms of actually approving, I do want to make sure we have a mechanism in place. And really it's up in the air at this point with the EDC not taking on that function over the COVID months. So I would like, um, you know, certainly some input from the board about how to proceed. We could have a small, a committee approve these, uh, requests. We could have the full board approve it. We could have staff assigned to approve it. Um, it all depends on what this board would like.
I mean, they're, they're typically, um, very straightforward. They're just going to make some repairs or, um, some cosmetic, uh, enhancements to their facility or their building. So, um, there really isn't, you know, there really isn't too much that's in the way of being complicated and I guess the idea or what I would say to this board is that we try to get this, um, we try to get this money moving out as quickly as possible because even though it's a small amount, it's, you know, it can be very helpful to some of our local businesses.
Yeah, this kind of investment right back into the downtown and a lot of times when they do take the loan out, they add on their own money into the improvement project. So it tends to draw out some non-loan investment as well.
How much is the loan asking for?
I believe this is for five, five thousand?
And we only have like 4,600 or 4,200 in that fund still?
We have.
Last talked about.
Yeah, yes.
They would only be entitled to what remains in the balance right now.
Okay, last we talked, we had said we were going to look at, you know, potentially modifying some of that. I, I, I know based on COVID times, I, I think the, the St. Sebastian Club had some, uh, you know, had a request in there for something along those lines. I, I know we said we were going to kind of gather some of these applications together. I'm not sure who made that suggestion. It might've been Diane last time. Had said, you know, maybe gather these and then have some sort of committee, maybe a, a, a branch of the Alderman kind of review them and, and make some decisions on that because I think to extend the loan out to a business here, just because they put the app in, really doesn't help the rest of the folks out who potentially might need some of that as well. Not sure.
Yeah, I mean, the problem has always been that while, while the city did the best it could and, and it was very generous to, to even start a revolving loan fund, but the, the problem is that we don't have enough to make a significant impact. So you want to try to address the ones that we can address in the meantime.
Maybe a review meeting with all pending applications with a committee.
Sure.
President appoint maybe, you know, a, a handful of Aldermen and we could tackle that in the next week or so.
How many do we currently have pending?
At least two.
The, the two that we, the one we discussed previously in this one?
At least those two.
The one you discussed previously, um, uh, has reapplied with a different, um, ask.
They would.
Yeah.
Right, we knew, we knew that was coming.
Someone called that too.
It was a surprise to me. And then we have, um, as John had mentioned, uh, this current one, Relish, and I believe Spectre is going to be asking for or has submitted an application for some additional money. So.
Okay, I'll, I'll, John, I, I'm going to, uh, ask a few of the Aldermen and form a small subcommittee. And, uh, we'll try to go through those and at least have a, I think it's important to have a process and to know that at least they're being looked at. And, you know, reviewed and then maybe we still bring them to the full board, you know, just, um, informationally or whatever, but, um, if anyone's hot to be on that committee, let me know. And.
I'm happy to help, um.
Otherwise, otherwise I'll start twisting arms. Diane, you want to be on there?
I did rants for years.
There you go. She's in.
All right. All right, so we'll come back, we'll come back to that, um.
I think Tony Spigarola wants to be in on it too.
Oh, I didn't see him. Who else had their hands up?
He did not.
Oh, yeah? Well, he said no.
Diane and I saw Tony's hand go up. And Tony Malone, I think, wants to be on too.
Tony squared and Diane, that's going to be a heck of a committee.
Yeah, there you go.
I just stepped down. It's 15 years as an officer in the firehouse. I need a little rest before I get involved in more.
All right, all right.
Welcome back, Tony. We missed you.
I'm taking a year, I'm taking a year break and then I'll be back involved.
Thanks for your service.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that, that's how we'll proceed on that. Um, so I'll be in touch and, uh, we'll, we'll get moving on that. Uh, the only other thing we have on the agenda is, uh, old business and this is, uh.
Hey, Josh?
Who's this?
I'll stay black.
Yes.
Yeah, could I get something under new business, please?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, why not? Depends on what it is. Now, go ahead, go ahead.
Something that Tony brought up before the meeting, um, about, uh, Tarek Roslin. Uh, it's been brought to my attention, um, that he has since moved out of the city, um, and that is why he is, um, no longer in attendance. Could we put together a letter just to reach out to him to see, um, what his status is?
Okay. I'll do that. I heard from him before, the, the previous meetings, but I haven't heard from, I didn't hear from him before tonight. So, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know if, uh, I, I, I received a text message today from somebody and that's what they stated and, um, they asked me to look into it, so I did.
Thanks, Dave. Um, all right, so going back to enter, uh, closing out of the old business, consideration of settlement threshold. This was something that, uh, I brought up last month. Um, Alderman Yaman is not here tonight. Alderman, uh, Janetti is. Uh, the three of us were on the, are currently on the claims committee. Um, and so we were looking at potentially, uh, finding a, a money threshold, um, where we wouldn't have to go bring these, these smaller claims to the full board, like when we go to the executive session and it's $300 for, you know, a tire that is clearly, you know, our fault and we're going to pay it. Uh, and we can, we can eliminate a lot of the smaller things, but we were trying to figure out what, what an amount would be that would balance between, uh, like an, uh, someone's insurance picking it up. We bounced a couple of numbers around. I mean, we were thinking maybe like $500 or a thousand dollars maybe. And then when it gets beyond that, obviously the full board would have to weigh in and that way we could just simply inform here's, here's how these, um, cases were, um, you know, settled or rejected or whatever it may be. And then everything else would still come here, but I think it would significantly cut down on, um, the executive session, um, items that, that gum up a lot of time that really we start talking for a half hour about 20 bucks or, you know, $300 here or there, whatever, but, uh, any thoughts on this?
Yes, I would say, I would say a good threshold is, um, um, 750.
What's your logic on that one?
Um, well, I heard 500 and I heard a thousand.
You pick in the middle.
I'm in the middle.
Hit the one in the middle, Rocky.
How about a thousand dollars unless it involves personal injury?
I like that.
I like that too.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I could go with that.
Um, Attorney Murray, what is the city's deductible? Was it 5,000 you quoted before in the past?
It's 25,000.
Oh, 25,000, okay, all right. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with a thousand.
Yeah, yeah, a thousand is good.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd recommend that if there is a threshold that in addition, that we make it a requirement that it must be with unanimous agreement from the claims committee.
Okay.
So in addition to there being a threshold, all committee members need to be in agreement.
Okay. Otherwise it gets bounced back to the.
Otherwise it goes to the full board.
Yeah, okay.
And that committee is Joe, Josh and Joe, or JoJo and Josh?
Yes.
Sounds like a new band you guys can start, but. Why?
JoJo, Josh and the two Tony?
I, I don't know. We seem to bounce back and forth sometimes on, you know, a tire, a pothole, this or that. I don't know. How, how do folks feel about the unanimous piece? I'm not necessarily a fan, but.
Well, I would want to make sure.
How many people are on that committee?
There's only three committee, three Aldermen and then city.
I'd want to make sure that when you're dealing with funds, you know, that go, that taxpayer funds that are going to be given out. Uh, number one, there's a clear record, uh, so not only is it a, a public meeting, but I'd also make sure that the decisions are conveyed to the full board along with the documentation it was based on. So you could see even after the fact, but just, just because of the safeguarding of taxpayer funds, I would say unanimous decision. At least make sure that, you know, it's, it's one that, that a real super consensus is reached rather than something that's a split between a handful of people. I think if it's a split between a handful of people, it, it deserves maybe a higher level of scrutiny because we know these things aren't always cut and dry, um, you know, without going into our executive session conversations. You know, it isn't always black and white. There, there is a little bit of room and I want to make sure that truly is a consensus before funds are awarded, especially because there are certainly situations where funds are not awarded. And we know those cases could be emotional and want to make sure that everyone gets a fair shake.
Well, with a three-person committee, if, if there's, you know, majority rules, if there's not, it has to go to us anyways, so.
Right.
I don't think it needs to be even stated. Either you're all on board or you're all not.
Right, yeah.
Well, no, if, if, if the majority, in the case of, you know, if you're saying the majority is going to take it, two out of three vote yes, the claim gets paid, it's, it's kind of closed at that point.
Right.
That's majority. I would say unanimous. I'd say if it's three, it needs to be three.
Well, I think we make bigger decisions with taxpayer money where we have less than a unanimous vote, so I'm, I'm still of the mindset that majority would take it. So we'll, I guess we could throw that out, see who likes what.
Does that mean that the board, uh, the board as a whole will not see these small claims?
Only after done, right.
They should be reported back to the board just as a report, but we don't have to discuss them because the, the committee.
Decided. Yeah, we're empowering the committee, uh, with the majority rule to decide them, to pay them or not pay them.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
I got a, Dave Blackwell, I'm sorry. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, I understand what Tony's saying and I sort of agree with him, but you get into a spot where you start making subcommittees of X amount of people for everything and only four people and three people start making decisions on stuff. I have no problem, I don't think a subcommittee should have any kind of power to make any kind of decision. Um, unless we all agree it's a unanimous vote by the subcommittee. Other than that, I believe all, everything should be brought before the, the full board. Um, and, you know, if it's unanimous in the subcommittee, it's more than likely going to be unanimous through the full board. I just don't want anybody to ever come back and, you know, question that it didn't go before the full board, that's all.
So, so Dave, are you saying that the committee would make, make the decision and then bring that decision back to the board?
Uh, not a decision, a recommendation would probably be the better word for it. Um, and then bring that recommendation to the full board to vote on.
And anything that wasn't, wasn't unanimous would end up on your executive session and we'd be talking about it anyway.
Well, if it's a unanimous one, I believe that, uh, Corporation Council is willing to, uh, accept that for legal, legal purposes, so I, I will agree with that with them.
I, I think it should be unanimous myself. I think if it's anything short of unanimous with a small number like that, you know, I think it gets a little dicey.
Yeah, yeah, it should, uh, come to, uh, the full board if all three of them are not on the same page.
Unless you guys like two hours talking about tires, but, you know. I know Janetti does. He loves talking about tires.
You're a funny guy, Josh.
That's why I put you on there, Joe.
I know, I know.
Ninety percent of them are tires, so we needed your expertise.
All the tires you want are down at the Derby Riverwalk along the, in the woods over there. They're all probably from Ansonia. All the tires you want are down at the Derby River Walk, along in the woods over there. They're all probably from Ansonia.
All right, so what do we want to do with this? Do we want to go with the 1,000 and unanimous? Otherwise, it gets kicked up to us, to the full board?
I agree with that.
Motion for that? Motion by Alderman Cassetti. Do we have a second?
Are we excluding personal claims? This is just property?
Yeah, if there was personal injury, I think those things automatically come to the full.
Right.
Yeah. So 1,000 unanimous and excludes anything with personal injury.
I'll go for it.
All right, second by Alderman Spigarolo. Any other further discussion?
Josh, should we abstain being on that committee?
Obviously. Or we can vote against it, Joe, if you want.
Only if there's tires involved.
Oh, yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
And I'll abstain, and Joe will abstain as well. So two abstentions, Janetti and Schuer. All right, thank you.
Did you get one opposed?
I heard two opposed.
Who was they opposed?
You and Dave Blackwell, right?
Well, I should know.
Who's?
Opposed, Fips and Blackwell?
And Blackwell? No. Fips.
Oh, sorry.
Fips and Mamon.
Fips and Mamon, okay. And two abstentions. All right, so not unanimous, but whatever.
Who were the abstentions?
Myself and Joe Janetti, because we're on the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for old business. We have no executive session. We'll try to keep it that way going forward. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Rivers. By Alderman Mamon.
13 seconds.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
A good night.
Good night, all.
Good luck, Joe, with your surgery, your work.
Yes, good luck.
Good luck, Joe.
Good prayers, my friend.
Thank you.
Take care.
You guys.